Here by open board of selectmen meeting, April 8th, 2019 at 6:00 PM. Please be advised that this meeting, as usual, will be broadcast on local cable as well as rebroadcast on YouTube. Could we all please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to sign Treasury warrant, 21 in payroll?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I don't believe we have any minutes tonight, right Mike?
No.
Okay. We're going to move, and just so everybody knows who's watching, we're moving straight into executive session. We will be returning immediately back to open session. Could I get a motion for executive session, reason number two?
I'll make a motion to move to executive session for reason number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collaborative bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, fire, police patrolman, police sergeants, DPW, with the return to open session immediately following.
Second.
Thank you.
Clock aye.
Walker aye.
Waitman aye.
Stollings aye.
Debye, and we are in executive session. We are back in open session. We apologize for the delay. It is 7:12 PM and we have come back into open session with the signing of the union contracts is the next thing on our agenda. So could I get a motion to sign the following contracts? Skip, were you looking for us to do these individually on the signatures?
No, you can do them all at once.
Motion to sign the following union contracts, fire, police patrolman, police sergeant, and DPW, and a non-union contract with Michael Moriarty.
Second.
Is that the motion?
Yep, that was a motion.
Motion, second.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? All in favor?
Stollings aye.
Aye. It's just an aye.
Yeah, it's just an aye.
Unanimous?
Yeah.
Thank you. Alright, we're gonna be taking a few minutes to sign a bunch of documents, and in the meantime, I'm actually going to move ahead if everybody's okay with that.
Sure, go right ahead.
Although I know we have a big audience, so the minute we're done, all signing, we'll reopen and we'll have everybody come up. How do you feel about that? Or do you want us to be a little bit more dramatic about this? Because we can do that too.
Please.
More dramatic. I'm gonna return all the union contracts in a minute, but just jumping over to our one appointment on the agenda, and I don't think we have anyone here for that, but we do have the under appointment, so one day liquor license. It notes Center Tree Bar and Grill, who is the entity taking on the license, but this is actually for a nonprofit event for the Police Foundation K9. Could somebody make a motion? Does anybody have any questions about this? So this is for the 5K9 race on May 4th, yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion that the board approve the one day liquor license. Expose Keef and Sale, and to sell wine and malt beverages to be drunk on the premises. Issue to Center Tree Bar and Grill on or about May 4th, 2019.
Thank you.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
Make a motion, we waive the fee.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. So while everyone is signing, an enormous amount of documents, and I will try to keep them moving down as I say this, we have a lot of people in the room tonight who aren't necessarily always here, but they are always, often, here in town, working for us. And we have five unions in town. I think this set of union negotiations, which when Margaret was here with us, there was a real effort being made to bring the union negotiations together, ensure that they were sort of all happening on the same page, and it's been really wonderful to hear back from the negotiating teams on how smoothly all of the contract negotiations went with all of our unions. And hopefully, everyone is happy with the outcome. I think we are, and we're happy to have you with us. Yeah, we will. So, let's see what we finished first.
All the union ones are with Mike.
These are, this is the warrants.
Yeah.
Did I just hand you in that?
That's payroll. Payroll is done. We're getting there.
Skip just signed the last one, so we're getting there.
You have an old school signature, you can actually read it.
Get a little squibby or a couple of them, no.
Run down, but...
You ready for the first one? Maybe?
Fire.
I hit fire here also.
This is Mike's.
Yep.
Alright, so our first fully executed set of documents from the board is for the union agreement for July 1, 2019, to July 30, 2022, with the Rutland Firefighters Association. Are there members here that would like to come up and take their turn? And if it makes more sense for you guys to sign there, wherever you want to go. Yeah, just move on.
Well, just be gentle with it, that's all.
Alright, the next one, fully executed, is the agreement between the Town of Rutland and Rutland Police Patrolman's Union, Mass Cop Local 399. Could our representatives come on up? We'll take down more plates, we'll make more space.
Thanks guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need a pen? Get a pen.
Highway.
Please.
Was it three or?
Three is four.
Thanks guys. Good night. Alright.
Press hard, you're making six copies.
Our next agreement to be executed is the agreement between Town of Rutland and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Council 93. This is our DPW, same date, July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2022. Do we have representatives here from DPW?
Sergeants are still here. We haven't signed anything.
Oh, really? Here you go, here you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice guys.
Thanks guys.
You're all by yourself, Neil?
I am.
It's a one man team.
Been signing twice. Three times.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Neil.
Pleasure doing business.
You too bud. Sergeants.
And our final agreement between the Town of Rutland and the Rutland Police Sergeants Union, July 1, 2019, to June 30, 2022. Welcome Sergeant Show.
Thank you.
Should've had a whole meeting just for this.
Right? Oh my gosh.
Yeah.
We did do a good job today, didn't we?
Thank you. Onward. Again, we just want to thank everybody that was involved in this. We recognize how much work our department heads, our union negotiators, our town administrator have put into that, and just to know how smoothly, relatively speaking, that all went was a huge undertaking and a huge feat, and we thank everyone involved, and we thank everyone who was here tonight for their service. We are moving on. Is there anyone here for public comment? Yes, come on up.
Yes, you do. Name and address, please. Michelle Van Reek, Charna Kill Road. And I'm here on behalf of the RDIC, but also, I guess, as a citizen. So we've been in contact with Ann Goby and Kim Ferguson from the RDIC because there is transportation money sitting at the State House for us to make improvements, and we would like to pursue that. So it's Chapter 79 of the 2014, so it's been there for a while, Transportation Bond Bill, and it does earmark for Rutland that $900,000 shall be expended to design, reconstruct, restore, resurface, and make improvements to roadways and sidewalks to improve pedestrian, bicycle, and school traffic, including the replacement and repair of manhole frames and covers, catch basins and covers, fire hydrants, streetlights and landscaping from Maple Avenue through the Rutland Heights Hospital property and past Central Tree Middle School and Naquag Elementary School in the Town of Rutland. Provided further, that $3 million shall be expended to design, reconstruct, restore, resurface, widen, and make safety and other improvements to roadways and sidewalks to improve pedestrian and bicycle safety, including guardrails, crosswalks, retaining walls, street lighting, and the replacement and repair of, uh, per, and it says, culverts and related improvements in landscaping, landscaping from the intersection of Main Street and Palmigusset Road to a point approximately one mile north of Palmigusset Road in the Town of Rutland. So she did go on to say, this is an email from Ann Goby, she did go on to say that Gary was involved, Gary Calaher, our former DPW, was involved with this, and Jay Ash as well, who is also, I think, no longer in that position. And I guess she did ask Gary if it would be possible to get an outline of work that had already been done to show the town's investment. When Secretary Ash was in town, he had mentioned more than once that he likes to see the town's investment, and do we have an outline of what work may happen first and funds needed? So I guess we're just looking at, a lot of people have changed roles, and we want to make sure that this money just doesn't go away on us, because that roadway is certainly for the safety of students, and also for the students walking up from Maple Ave through the Rutland Heights property. So getting that roadway repaired, and if we can get money from the state to help us with that.
So we should just clarify, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, and I think we have people in the room who know, that is not money sitting in coffers somewhere in the State House. That was part of a very large bond bill from, as you noted the date, 2014, right? The money's not there. It needs to be included in the budget and appropriated by the current legislative session. And I think if this is something that the RDIC wants to have us begin to get on to, to your point about having, you know, how Gary had done some legwork, it's very clear that, A, we might not get 900, I think that was the number that kind of got thrown out there, it's the bond bill number, but we won't necessarily get that from the governor's bill. And also, we're gonna have to come up with kind of an in-kind, or, right?
Yes.
You know, work showing good faith effort, i.e.
That's what it sounds like.
Yeah. So it's probably something that's gonna end up going on our DPW director's list of long-term goals.
Okay.
But yeah, we wouldn't, I mean, you know, Michelle, we wouldn't want to leave anybody with the impression that we've been just kind of sitting around while $900,000 was there for the taking. I wish it were.
Right, but if we have to do something to kind of pursue it too, I would like to pursue it if we can, so that...
Yeah.
And especially that this condition of that road is really awful.
I know.
So something to consider, and it sounds like we just want to make sure that it was on the front burner, because a lot of people have changed. Margaret's gone, Gary's gone, Jay Ash isn't no longer there, like, and we want to just make sure that people are aware of this and that we do something to pursue it, if we can. Because we're gonna have to make improvements at some point anyway.
Yep.
Through the chair, and most, a good part of it has been done, enlarged already. Through the Rutland Heights up to the school has been done.
Right.
With the exception of the top coat.
Right.
And from there out, we need to, we need to get it done.
So we can include what has already been done as part of our good faith expenditure to make that happen?
I don't see why not, because the whole, the whole distance from Maple to Main is still a roadway.
Yes.
It's not an approved...
It is an approved roadway now.
Yeah. No, I mean the school section.
Oh.
Not Maple to Main.
Just that little piece.
Main to the gate. It's not even a gate. So I guess the answer is yes, we know it's there.
Okay.
As a possibility.
Okay. And keeping it on the front burner?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How can we push it? We need to push it. We don't need to put it in, well, yes and no, because, I mean, you know, I've been sitting here for quite some time with Margaret and Gary.
Right.
And it was brought up, I'm gonna say probably last spring, or, you know, maybe a year ago or so.
Yeah.
And Gary was working on it, and...
Yeah. I mean, Joe's been made aware of how bad that roadway is in front of the schools, and he had some comments immediately about the fact that drainage might be part of his issues. It's a huge, huge project. Clearly gonna take more than, most likely, even the $900,000 that's been set aside. It's going to take a real political push to get this through, and I think before we do that, we're probably gonna have to show some good faith effort with money for feasibility design, would be my guess. I don't think we'll have any chance of getting on to the list of the bond bill items that get pulled and actually put into a, into the budget and money found for them, unless we show feasibility design, design work.
How do we do that? How are we gonna push that?
Well, we could do a debt exclusion. I wouldn't say for the spring, but we could do it in the next election, try to get a debt exclusion for that kind of money. We'll have to get numbers first and come up with a scope of work.
Talking about the numbers, no.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
How do we help Joe get this thing rolling?
Well, I think him hearing this tonight is probably a good first step. Obviously, having been here now, what are we at, 90 days, Joe? Just over 90 days?
Mike and I talked about this two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this is kind of the first...
It's not off, it's not like we didn't know.
Okay.
We were looking into it, and...
Great.
Kind of leading up to the thing I have next is Deputy Secretary McGorthy's coming out to tour the property next week.
Perfect.
There you go.
There you go.
He's, the new Jay Ash is Mike Cannelli, and he's the second in command after Mike.
It was supposed to be last Tuesday.
We're supposed, yeah, and then it canceled, so he's scheduled for next Tuesday at 9:30.
Is he aware of the possible $900,000?
Uh, not yet, but he will be tonight.
Yeah.
Joe, I just sent you the language, too. I just, I pulled it up on the state's database.
Yeah.
Yeah, we started doing the research.
Yeah, yeah.
And Sergeant Troy was here, he was gonna also mention about how the, you know, traffic always parking by Naquag and everything else is really bad for the kids coming off between the cars and everything else, and...
Yep.
We need to, need to push.
Main Street parking in the afternoon. Was it all the way down to Pleasantale, almost?
Almost, yeah. Long pickup line.
Yeah.
And you're allowing this, right?
What are the options? What do you do? What do you tell us?
There has to be, yeah, well, I agree with Skip on this, there probably should be a bus or something. How do you teach a kid not to take a car, but go mass transit if you don't send them young?
Okay, so...
But anyway, that's a different story.
Yeah.
And may I?
Are you speaking on public comment? Michelle, were you finished?
I'm finished.
You sort of seeded the floor. Alright, so name and address.
Dick Williams, Overlook Road. I just want to bring up again, the parking lot right next to us, are we gonna be able to get this thing done? May I make a suggestion that you do it too sweet, because the dirt people are leaving, and supposedly, I don't know if it's the first or end of June, so if you, that, there was a fine that was supposed to be done, we got a community service, and it was asked, you know, about the parking lot.
Yeah.
And Gary was kept on putting off, putting off about grinding up the asphalt down below here, and...
Yeah.
DPD says, no, you don't need any, any okay from us, it's alright, go ahead and grind it, and never heard a thing about it. Well, before these people take off, I want to make it doggone sure that the town, you know, gets it done for zero. That's number one.
Okay.
I keep bringing up this, and I'm gonna bring it up again, I don't know if our DPW director has been down to Putnam Park, or even if he knows where it is, but I don't think much money has been spent in that place for years, and I'm talking years. Anyways, you know how you people are looking for space for soccer, whatever? There's approximately maybe six acres in Walder, or something, or close, very close to that. And just to let you know, Patelenny Gangles and Brunel Drive, up in the back there, this is Devil School, and, you know, Palmigusset Road here. There's seven point plus acres up in the back there, and you can see by the contours of the line, it's fairly flat up there. What a heck of a field you could have between the Devil School and there. And the town, and the conservation restriction that was up there, it was an HOA, it's supposed to have been set up, and if anything failed about the trails and all that, the town was supposed to fix it and then build the people there, but I don't know whatever happened to that CR, but to me, please, you ought to take a look at maybe that piece of property, because there are two entrances to it. There's a fifty foot right here, and there's a bigger one right here to get up into this.
Those are off the neighborhood road.
This is all the houses in the neighborhood.
Right.
This is up in the back, and like I say, up through the woods here is where Devil School is. So you can have that.
Dick?
Yes?
Do you know who owns this parcel here that's all around the park?
That was Jimmy Donaldson.
Oh, that's, okay, that's his driveway goes way up here. Okay.
Yeah, his house is up in here sometimes. But this is the open space for Bryce Lemon.
Mm-hmm.
But we've never got a chance to talk to Jimmy about trying to get an easement through here to make from the park all the way to the real trail.
That's six acres, you said?
Approximately, yeah.
Why is, why is everybody up here?
He's got a picture, because he age but not one.
Oh!
But anyways, I mean, to me, there are very, quite a few options around here, and sorry to say that, in my opinion, not much has been spent on kids for recreation in this town, and I'd love to see a little bit more done for them. Okay. Amen.
Thank you, Dick. Alright, Dick, I'm trying to find the stipulated payment, and I think it was dated, I don't even see it. Uh, 2017, does that sound right? July 2017?
That's 1719.
Yeah.
Yes, I would say it probably is...
Yeah, so the penalty amount, the stipulated penalty amount was $16,250, and I remember what you're talking about.
And it was dropped to nine. If they did a, if they did a...
Well, it was an in-kind donation.
Yes, correct.
But you're right, that donation never happened, so we can, we can pursue this. I'm gonna forward this over. Okay.
Alright. Thank you.
Thank you. Was that it?
That's it for me for tonight.
Anybody else here for open session? Yes?
Nick Monaco, police chief, we just received a donation of a pedestrian crosswalk sign from Jonathan Moore, from Rutland Law League.
Great.
I just want to say thank you, Jonathan.
Alright.
We, this is the same as the one we put up in the center of town in front of the school. We got real positive feedback from it, so...
So having already seen a couple of near misses on Palmigusset this week, and recognizing that technically the state is supposed to, and I'm gonna look at you, Joe, is supposed to take the lead on the crosswalks, can we re-line and maybe move over a little bit? The crosswalk that exists right now between the Marshfield, you take a look at it, between Marshfield and the, essentially, it's sort of, it ends up at the marketplace. But where it is right now, the kids are crossing right in between two parking places, it's a very odd spot, it's not necessarily the safest spot either. I don't know if we can move it up or down, I don't know if RLLB has a very specific location where they want to put it, maybe right where the stairs are?
Um...
The stairs going down?
Yeah, going down by the...
Going down, yeah.
That'd be great, yeah.
And then you can have your new sign put up in a fancy, fancy painted new crosswalk.
I'll touch base with Joe, let me look at it.
Thank you. Thanks for the sign. Alright, thank you. Anybody else? No? More public comment? I'm moving on. Mike, it's your turn.
Alright, in, I'm gonna say, let's do under five. The Constellation contract was signed. When I went back to Constellation, I asked if there was any way that they could recoup some of the money that they had charged us on the variable rate, and after six or seven back and forths, what they did was, rather than the rates that were before the board last meeting, which I believe was 0.110 and change, or pieces of change at that point, they gave it to us for 0.99, so even cheaper than the cheapest rate that they gave us. And what that is, is over the course of the four years of the contract, we will recoup that 900, or $9,500 that was due to them because we went into the variable rate. So even though we will have to pay that upfront, we'll get the money back over the long term. So that's what we were able to do with Constellation. The joint meeting for the Board of Selectmen Finance Committee and Capital Improvement Planning Committee will be on Monday, April 25th, and that's to go over all of the items that were submitted for the town warrant before submission that Friday to the printer, so that they can be posted by the constables before the legal deadline for a town meeting. The meetings with the governor's cabinet members have been ongoing and will continue to go. Secretary Acosta came out and talked about different programs for workers' training that are popular in this area, that people from the greater Rutland area have been asking her office about. Then Secretary Sudders came out and talked about everything from senior centers to opiate education, to veteran services, to elderly services, and things of that matter, and had a very long meeting with Director Nichols from the COA and myself. It was very productive, and as I said earlier, Deputy Secretary McGorthy will be coming out next Tuesday morning, so if any of you would like to attend that, please let me know, and taking a tour of the town. He, again, Secretary of Economic Development on that one. As these continue to grow, they will, Secretary Arenas' office from Veteran Services have already reached out for a possible visit, so we'll keep those going. And the budget, you'll see more about that today, our current, in the whole, deficit is $33,000.
Ah, nice work.
Thank you. That could go up if we look at 2% COLAs for our non-union personnel, since, in my personal opinion, fair is fair, so we should be looking at all of our employees, not just our union employees. But the hit on that, should that happen, will be under $7,000, I think.
Is that what the cherry sheet numbers?
That is with the governor's cherry sheet number. The House and Senate should be coming out soon.
What's the forecast?
The, the local aid could go up if the House and Senate. It won't be by too much, but historically, it goes up.
We might not know in time for a town meeting. I would personally not say that the State House looks like it's moving that fast, that we're gonna know.
This is actually a lot slower than they've traditionally gone in the past.
Yeah.
And that is the update.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Four minutes.
Thank you. Alright, under new business, first thing, we have the CIPC, capital recommendations, and we got that as an email, I think, is that in the folder as well?
Yeah.
Okay. Did anybody have any, this is still in technical draft form. Did anybody have any questions?
So just for clarification, this is...
So just for clarification, this is recommendations in the priority of projects, but not...
But not in funding?
Correct. Not in how to fund it.
Yeah. Out of all the applications they got, these are all the things that they think take the top three priority. And it lists the score that they got on their priority sheet, rubric as well. And they have ideas, but they have no idea what the status of those accounts are, what we have in... So these are their recommendations based on us to figure out where to get the money from.
So if I go from the bottom up, number three on their list, which got twenty-seven out of fifty-five points, was the fire squad one replacement of a nineteen ninety-five Ford. Chief Neip has informed Mike that those monies can be found, um, outside of the levy with grant and, um...
Holding hospital funds.
Holding hospital funds. To be spread out over six years?
Yep.
Okay. Um, going up to number two, thirty-one points out of fifty-five, was the algae bloom water study at eighteen thousand three. Uh, the CIPC's recommendation on this is pretty much in line with what we would have been doing, which is it needs to come out of water enterprise free cash. Um, so that's certainly something that can be expended. And then number one is our challenge. Um, so that's the backhoe to replace an existing nineteen ninety-eight John Deere. Joe's number is, um, that he came out with after trade is one fourteen, four fifty. However, Joe also has a pretty significant need for a couple of mowers and...
Those around the wall.
We can jump a little bit, but the next couple of things under new business are ballot questions. I think we need to, and those would have to be set tonight. This is the one item that we simply don't have the money in free cash or in the levy to cover. Um, it's a large expenditure for us, although it's not large enough necessarily to merit a debt exclusion. We could do a one-year capital exclusion. Um, the numbers on that roughly are something like, what, Mike, what did I say the other night? Was it sixteen cents?
Yeah.
It, I think it's something like sixteen cents, uh, for every thousand valuation, uh, for one year. So people would be looking at about, somewhere between a thirty-eight and forty-five dollar hit to their tax bill for that expenditure. Yeah, do you want to add to that, Joe?
The score. You didn't pronounce the score.
I apologize. Thirty-three out of fifty-five. Number one on their scoring.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Which is one of the highest they've scored in all while.
I just wanted to call that out for the benefit of people watching.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I guess, yeah, do you want to, I wouldn't keep to that. I'll jump to the other stuff.
I mean, unless people have specific questions relative to the CIPC recommendation, uh, we've certainly had years where we weren't able to fund any of their recommendations. Uh, we've been certainly trying to play catch-up. Knowing that the only one that is going to be left unfunded is their number one. Knowing what situation the DPW is in relative to staffing levels and equipment levels. Do people, anybody have a feeling about where they want to go with this?
I mean, I think that we've kind of been taking care of police and fire slowly. And DPW's always kind of been put on the back burner and somehow piecing together stuff. So there's a need, Joe sees a need, and CIPC sees a need. So I think we need to try our, our best due diligence to get that funded. And it sounds like the only viable option for that is as a capital expense, one year.
Well, no. I mean, have, have we raised taxes to meet the police and fire needs?
Yeah, I mean, we're at levy capacity when it comes to general government. And just last year, we did, um, a debt exclusion in order to fund the new ambulance that's about to be delivered in a month. Yeah. Yeah, we've had in the past, and we'd have to, Skip would remember, we'd have to go back a few years, but we've certainly tried debt exclusions, sort of a menu option for the voters where they could pick and choose things. We've also tried general government overrides. Generally speaking, DP, I can't remember the last time DPW got anything. Can you?
There's no doubt that they've been overlooked, but question, I mean, just to keep adding to people's tax base.
The nice thing about a capital exclusion is that it's just that one-year hit. We know this is a piece of equipment that will get us far longer than the debt would ever last. Right, do you have an estimate on lifespan on this new one?
Twenty years.
Ten years? So fifteen. Um, yeah. Uh, this got floated to FinCom as well on Thursday night as an option.
What did they say?
They didn't say much.
I mean, a little bit of what Leah said, which was, you know, that DPW is the one department that's sort of, has been taking a hit for a long time now. Yeah.
And nothing to say about it, Skip?
What, FinCom? They said they didn't want to even talk about any of them until they had them all in front of them.
They wanted, they wanted...
All the articles in front of them before they even talked about anything.
But unfortunately, they knew that tonight we needed to place the ballot questions, so...
Well, you know what?
Yeah.
Let the voters decide.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I will say this too, if it, the ballot has to be printed a lot earlier than the warrant. So if it goes to the ballot and it fails at town meeting, it's still on the ballot. But if it passes the ballot, then we just have to then have it repass town meeting. So there's a kind of circular loophole there with the process. Uh, and when we get to the next one, there's a one pager that lists all the request for money stuff that we received, um, that includes the three ballot questions that people asked for.
So the question before us is, we have an option to, to nut it, cut it from being on the warrant and the ballot?
Well, so do you want to...
Yeah.
Why don't we jump? So we'll, we're going to skip the warrant review first draft. We'll go over to ballot questions since that's more time sensitive and it's very specific to the CIPC discussion.
Yeah, so this is the page here. It's in the, the pa, the front of the packet, it's in on your folder, it looks like this with the warrant. But the page we want to look at is this.
That's in under open session, I think, right?
Yes. You'll see at the bottom that there were three ballot questions that were requested to be placed on the warrant and on the ballot. Again, they have to go on both if they go on one. Uh, the bottom one is the one that Sheila was just referring to, and that includes a lot more than the backhoe. Um, but I can break this down for you if you'd like. The top one is a, and, oh, by the way, I should say this too. In the materials that look like letters, if we received a warrant request, I provided the backup material with the warrant request for you. The first ballot question that listed there came from Director Moriarty along with the, um, school department. And it's actually something that I'm also quite in favor of myself after being here for just under ninety days, uh, is a security systems upgrade, uh, as a debt exclusion to be spread out over a couple of years. And that is a high number that...
Jesus.
Yes. That's why I made sure it was not a one-year.
Come on.
What that would go to, and I can, I'm trying to find the page that breaks this down, is it's panic...
Well, this is for the schools though, right?
Schools and, and the bulk of that comes on the school side. I will say that. Is, um, security cameras in all town old, town-owned buildings. That, it's probably one or two cameras per building, and it's the front door. Um, and that's where we, the most sites is needed.
So people know what we're looking at though. It says five hundred and seventy-eight thousand.
The bulk of that's really on the school side. The school has over a hundred cameras that they're looking at. And that's why when they did the walkthrough with the facilities manager, Director Moriarty, and the vendors, they, the schools requested about a hundred and sixteen cameras. And that's based off of the new school security protocols that the state has released. Really, the remaining cameras on the town side are eight, I think. Uh, but if you break that down, the cameras cost a total of three hundred and twenty-five thousand. The, um, keys in town-owned buildings have been switched so many times that the fire department actually has no keys for the annex or community hall. Um, they come and borrow my keys whenever they need it. Um, so this would change everything to a, a FOB system for the doors, um, which increases security because right now you could probably kind of lean on the doors and they'd open. And that covers two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I should say, in all of this too, these are not to exceeds. The vendors came in saying each number is probably padded by ten percent. But, and how that works with an exclusion vote is if you don't spend it, then it gets dropped as soon as the project is done. So the increase is only for the amount, so we could authorize up to this number. But then if it hits three twenty-five and we're done, then we're done. We stop at three twenty-five. That money doesn't continue to go and we don't have it as a wash fund.
So these are considered, uh, two and a half overrides?
Yeah. And again, these were submitted by...
And it goes to the town.
Well, they're all two and a half overrides, but these are all debt exclusions and not an override. So we call an override, but the debt exclusion is temporary. When the debt is done, the tax goes away.
Yeah.
The general override is quote forever, unless you do, unless you do an under-ride.
Panic buttons, three thousand dollars of that goes to that. Uh, and that includes all town offices, including this room that we're currently in. Um, so the bulk is really cameras on the school side. But with the current environment with school safety and the recent upticks in incidents happening around schools, it was kind of a high priority of our public safety officials in the school department to look at updating our school's security items.
Mike, do you know if there's grant monies that are available for...
Yeah, we're looking at that, yeah.
And everything, so...
We've applied. It's very limited because this is the first year that it's there, and it would only cover eighty thousand dollars.
But any grants that would be awarded would come off...
Would come off of this.
The debt amount that then we're paying for.
And again, that just reduces it and it stops. These are not to exceeds. This isn't a limit. Uh, the new senior center study came from the Council on Aging as a result of our, um, the recent vote of the board to create a new senior center committee. Nancy called around, got quotes, and then talked to Elder Services, which is the state office underneath the governor's office, uh, underneath Secretary Sutters, and we talked about that when she was out here. She said that we'll be very safe with thirty thousand dollars. Most likely that'll come in around twenty-two to twenty-five, but there have been some outliers. Um, and again, where these are not to exceed numbers and not raise this number, that would all stop as soon as the study is complete, if we can get a better price. But again, we can't go out for any proposals or official quotes until a appropriation is made. So that's why those are on there. And then the last one is the DPW supplies. That number's actually incorrect, and that's my fault, and I will take credit for that one. It includes the backhoe, um, two outfit arms for the backhoe that are five thousand dollars each, uh, that would help Joe out. One is a thumb.
And another is an articulating.
To help when we're doing road repair. And then the reason why it is false is I went quick and put these, all CIPC numbers for DPW in that and the Machka Pog study to see why the pond smells has to come out of some type of water-related, not out of highway operating. And so you have to separate those there. So, um, but Joe did request, um, let me know that there were some additional items that could be used by the highway department. One is a hot box. Um, now, correct me if I'm wrong on this one, Joe. When we go out and we tear up the road, we can put that tar into the hot box?
Keep it all...
And it'll melt the tar that we tore up, and we can go back and put an actual tarred patch on a pothole rather than filling it with tar grindings. And then have, and then it just comes up the next time it snows anyway. So this would have put hot asphalt. And it's placed, that'd be sixty-five hundred dollars. And then the last thing is a...
Some welding screens for the staff.
Oh, yeah, so they, their eye protection. There, that'd be fifteen hundred dollars. So the actual amount should be one forty-eight, nine, sixty-six and not one fifty-nine, two, sixty-six. And those are the three items that were submitted for consideration for the ballot. As a, two capital exclusions and one debt exclusion. The difference, capital exclusions are a one-year increase. Debt exclusions are spread out over a period of time. That way the impact isn't as much of a hit.
And come off once they're paid.
Correct. All of these come off once they're paid. Yeah.
And all the ratio taxes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's only that. How about the standard two and a half percent and everything else goes along with it?
Yep.
So, I mean, you own a fixed income at eight hundred dollars a month, you know, it's pretty tough, hey?
That's right.
We've never sat here and not taken these questions seriously. We've also had, not had very many years where we didn't need to consider them. Because we, we do operate at our levy capacity. There are plenty of towns that don't, and they have a lot more options. But because of the growth that we've seen in the past number of years and the way the school funding issues continue to go on, you know, absent a huge change in the foundation formula, um, we've had to make significant cuts year after year after years to the, year to these budgets. So in some cases, I mean, you, you look at a department head coming out of a city like Worcester, asking for an item for fifteen hundred dollars, because he can't fit it under his general government budget. It's, it's really saying something. And, you know, Nick's still here. The fact that we're trying to fit cruisers under your general government budget line items this year for the first time in over a decade, um, it, it speaks to the fact that we're moving in the right direction, but we're not there yet. We're not going to be able to get Joe these things, particularly that biggest piece of equipment, unless we consider this as an option. And I know it's a difficult option, eh, at least...
But it's, it's going to be up to the people.
Yeah, well, that's the thing. At least sitting here and doing it this way, we let them decide if they feel it's the right option as well. Um, the hard thing with DPW is, you know, if they're doing their job well, it's invisible. Nobody sees it. And we're at the point where they're having a hard time doing their job. Um, I need to ask you about the numbers. So if we started out with what was here, the one fifty-nine, two, six, six, and just took out the eighteen, three from water, the algae bloom study, that leaves me with one forty-nine, six, six. I just want to make sure I'm not, because I heard you say one forty-eight, nine, six.
That was including the two that I, in Joe's email, the hot box and the...
I heard you say the hot box for five.
The hot box is sixty-five hundred.
Okay.
And the welding shield for eye protection is fifteen hundred.
Oh, I see. That was the other eight thousand.
Yeah.
Okay, so what about those mowers, Joe?
Those are included in them.
Are those in here?
Yep.
Okay.
That's also if you go to the one of these that has the request from that, it includes the actual price list.
I think I was looking at my backup. There it is. Thank you. I have the ballot, not the back. Thank you. Okay, so lawn mower, brush mower, backhoe, backhoe attachments, and now the other two.
The hot box and the welding shield.
So that is replacing the eighteen, three is just eight.
Yep. Okay.
You could eventually take, take advantage of that at some point, but you're not there yet.
Right.
You could also take some water routine during some point towards your backhoe expenditures.
The backhoe's used for all three.
Yes, you could use a percentage. Sumer's doesn't have any funds right now. You could put towards that. But in theory, and if you, the CIPC also mentioned that, split the capital cost of purchasing a machine between the three, three sections.
They did mention it, but knowing where we are with the water sewer funds, there's no real reason to not fund them this way and then indirect charge.
I'm not disagreeing.
Okay. Um, I guess the first question is, how are people feeling about all three? Are you seeing an immediate sort of yes, we need to do all three? No, we can't do any of these. We need, you know, I...
I have a question. I know free cash in the spring generally is very small, much a smaller amount than in the fall. Um, but could the senior center feasibility study, that thirty thousand, come out of free cash?
Yes.
I don't know.
It could.
Yeah, in the fall, yeah.
I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't have...
It's a, it's a possibility for sure.
I'm just thinking we did the feasibility study for the town hall and everything out of free cash, but...
That could work.
But we need, we're still down, what, thirty-three thousand?
Well, yeah, that, that's including a suggestion from the finance committee of a hundred fifty thousand dollars of free cash going into the budget. Which, again, DOR highly suggests against using free cash at all for the budget. But when you're in a tight spot, um, and with some projected revenue that we're expected to get in the next year, it should wash next year to the point where we won't have to use, the goal is always not to use free cash.
And thirty thousand?
And we've done it every year.
We've, no, we haven't had the money to do it. We've actually only done it for the past three or four years. We didn't have enough free cash in the fall to do anything.
Yeah, we, I tried real hard not to use any, but then we, we couldn't get down any closer than two hundred thousand dollars in the hole.
But, I mean, so the thirty thousand dollars earmarked for feasibility study for a senior center.
Could come out of free cash.
But that's, this thirty thousand is, is computed into the...
No, that, none of these are in the operating budget that we're in the hole currently. Yeah, these are all on top of the existing operating budget.
Let the people decide.
It is, it is an option. It is, it is an option, if we wanna hold it till fall to use cash, that's an option. We also have debt coming off the books currently.
Twenty-twenty, I thought.
No, I mean, general, it's, there's gonna be a small amount from between now, twenty-twenty's the big drop, but we do have some.
I have a question for the senior center feasibility, is that the feasibility of a new s, new place, because isn't there-
That involves hiring a consultant to look, location options, space, if they, if it's rather just reuse and repurpose the existing space?
So that is one of the considerations that could, that would go in with that?
That would go into a potential study, yes.
I think the ability to do that, starting soon when we've just seated a buildings committee.
Yeah, yeah.
And then having the CIPC have the luxury of time to take a longer look at it, it's been on their list for a while as well. Um, knowing where our debt is, the timing's probably right. I think to your question, so, we went into the fall with six hundred twenty-four thousand dollars in certified free cash. We spent a little over half of it, and we're left with that two eighty-three. We had not been in that type of position for a very long time. Um, when Margaret came on, we were starting to see things looking a little better, we had solar money coming in, and so that's where we started putting that one fifteen free cash, um, in the fall, sort of setting it aside, kind of earmarking it to be used towards the operating budget, not that we want to. But, um, so that leaves us with, you know, about a hundred thirty thousand dollars still in free cash in the spring. To your point, we could use more to plug the hole, but we're, you're, you're close, you're close.
Yeah.
I don't know if we need to go over the one fifty. So there is that option as well, that actually could be on the spring special town meeting, if we don't want to ask for more money from the taxpayers, and we wanna use money we've already got, um, we would still be holding over a chunk of change from spring free cash. I think the one thing that's a little bit still a wild card, although maybe not so much now, is our snow and ice deficit number, which I know you're still kinda working on. Um, so, you know, we're gonna have to figure out that and figure out the holes in his budget because of snow and ice, um, before we can really say where we are.
That was my next question, was if there was any available free cash in this, what the available free cash in the spring would be, knowing that we'll probably have snow and ice deficit?
No, we won't.
We will, yeah. The, uh, current free cash state is on this sheet here that you have.
Yep.
Uh, and it was emailed out earlier. I will say that we did receive seventy-seven thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars worth of warrant articles that was requested from free cash for the warrant. So I don't think we'll be able to afford all of that.
Yeah.
Uh, and we might have to make a decision to move some to the fall, but again, since that, we have until April twenty-sixth to decide if it's on the warrant or not. The only real three that we have to worry about tonight are the three valid questions, with a definite timeline.
Skip, what's your sense on putting-
Senior center on there? I'd hold it till, till later, myself.
Would you try to either fund it with free cash, or would you try to-
I, I think we could fund it, we're not spending any money, if we got a good committee out and do their, do due diligence to find a place to put it and talk to some contractors of building it and everything else. I don't see why we gotta spend all this money for committees to do this and that and the other, when we got capable people in this town that would be more than willing to help us. I'm sorry, I just, that'd be like me going to talk to somebody down the city to tell me how to raise a pig, I think. I'm sorry, I just can't, I just can't see it.
You're not alone, you're not alone, Skip.
We got several seniors in there that are not, that, over there that are very intelligent. And you got other people in town, engineers, architects, everything else, that'd be more than glad to help.
And everyone I talk to would rather not have their taxes go up anymore.
That's right.
A dollar, they're done, you know?
I don't even think that should be on, I mean, the other two items, hey, go for it, but.
I mean, I guess I see the, I see the benefits of having professionals do it in the sense that for a project of that size with the accessibility and everything that's required of it, I-
Why can't we find the place, get the engineer, the picture of what we want, and then bring it to them, instead of paying them thirty thousand dollars, tell you, this is what you're gonna get? All right, you understand where I'm coming from?
I, I totally understand where you're coming from, yeah, yeah.
But, I'm only one member of the board, I would say remove that question too, of the ballot, but I'm just one.
I think this is two different questions. I know, Skip, you feel strongly that feasibility design-type studies aren't a necessity.
I do, that's right.
We're probably looking at something like a six million dollar building, all total, so most likely, any type of funding, um, when we go out to bid, they're gonna be looking for feasibility design, but that's a different discussion.
Which we're really not close to until we, the big debt is out, right?
Yeah.
Right, but that's nearing, which is why we need to start talking about it. Um, I think the question is, is funding it here and funding it this way and funding it now appropriate? And if that's the case, that sounds like we have a decision on senior center and that wouldn't get placed as part of a ballot question. Is that fair?
And I think if, if it's a decision between kicking that down the road a little bit, because you're not really serious about the conversation until the heavy debt comes off, right? But what's, what's more critical is, you know, the backhoes and, and the three items of the DPW who've been neglected. Uh, but I, I, I share Skip's concerns about studies, just to have a study.
Okay.
You know, we, you know, in the town hall study, uh, we're like, oh, what about the one that we just, we just did? And they wrote these big books full of these old floor plans and stuff, that was done how many decades ago, right? That's good money after bad, as they say, so make a motion, Skip, Allah.
Well, we don't need a motion yet, and we only need a motion to place, so it's sounding right now like we're not gonna be placing senior center, is that fair?
Well, it's true.
Make a motion, we don't place it, so nobody can say that we decide to place it later.
Well, no, it's tonight, it's, it's all or nothing tonight, Skip, we're gonna be placing ballot questions, we don't have to not place ballot questions.
Can I just ask for clarification from the, from Mike? For, if my understanding is correct, the large sum of debt that we have coming off in a couple of years, we don't necessarily want to replace all of that by any means, but to keep our ratings on the up and up, we need to have, carry some amount of debt, so we could be looking to add a little bit, is that my, is that true?
Yeah, our bond rating goes up, or stabilizes at the minimum, but goes up if we actually maintain X amount of debt. Cause it shows like your credit card, you're not building a credit score unless you're actually using something that you're getting credit for.
The perk of having a feasibility study for a large project, uh, not a huge project, but a six million, potentially six million dollar project, would be when that large comes off, we would have something in the pipeline to kind of-
That'd be a portion of it, the other portion is that certain, and I have to check, I haven't done the construction contracting class yet, um, but certain projects are required by law, um, to have certain studies done. I don't know if feasibility for a new senior center falls under that.
I'm just trying to figure out the timing of things, like, I mean, it was-
The, the timing is right, we're, we're in the right spot, because you're probably looking at something like a year and a half worth of preparation. Again, talking about a building committee, you're talking about public input, um, there's a lot that goes into this. A feasibility study, when you think about timeline, this won't get approved to even begin the process of looking for a contractor to do it until July one. You're then probably not looking at final documentation until January, you know, so we're, we're already talking pretty far out, um.
But I guess my question is, if the fall's looking like there may be more free cash available, is, I mean, that's a gamble.
It's a gamble, it's always a gamble, always a gamble. You, you certainly hope that there will be, but-
I'm not in favor of delaying it, I'd rather see it right now.
The senior center.
Yep.
I mean, we can place them and-
Well, I think the question is ballot then, or free cash. We have spring free cash, but we also have a list of other items that were requested of us from, from free cash, and we have snow and ice deficit.
But we have to set the ballot for tonight, and we haven't, we won't have time to go through all the other free cash.
Well, that's why I put them on the same page as the cover letter, so those are all on the top.
Right, but to debate them all, or talk about them all.
And we just signed five union contracts.
Although, that thirty-two was included, I, for all of those.
But we chose to invest in the people, but, right?
Yeah.
We did, I mean, for the public, we invested in the people and the employees of the town. Which I think is important.
I mean, I'm leaning a little bit towards placing that on the ballot, and then it's placed, and it's still gonna have to go through town meeting, right?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
And like Mike's-
But this is gonna be on there anyway when it comes time to vote.
Right.
All right, so they can vote that through at a, at a ballot, then you're gonna have to have another town meeting to approve it.
If it fails at town meeting, right, right, right.
If it fails at town meeting.
Town meeting comes first.
Right.
It's, it's a warrant article on town meeting floor, it goes to the ballot regardless of those results, because the ballots are already printed.
It is later.
Cause it could be voted down at town, at town meeting, and still you could get it through.
I mean, historically, it's been voted in favor, things have been voted in favor at town meeting and then voted down in the ballot.
There's no historically, because we flipped the meeting and the ballot three years ago, yeah, there's no historically.
It's not a vote against the senior center, it's a vote against thirty thousand dollars, just for a study, or something that could happen down the road at a time when we're, we have to make up thirty thousand dollars to balance the budget.
We had a committee coming on, senior, for the senior center, and they could make suggestions and get half of that done with no, no charge whatsoever. I don't know, but hey, you guys do what you're gonna do. Well, vote.
Nobody's made a motion.
I did, I made a motion not to post, and you said we're not doing that.
No, we make a motion to place articles.
I'll make a motion, place article one and article three.
So we haven't talked about one yet, five hundred thousand dollars.
We're on the same page here?
We haven't, we haven't talked about one yet.
Last page.
These are, the articles are-
Is it here?
No, it wasn't handed.
Yeah, those packs, I mean, there's more than just that, but all of these are.
It's like, no, these are numbered.
Yeah, I should say that there's always a line next to the article on those papers. Reason being is when the board, CIPC, and FinCom vote to place the articles on the warrant, they also have to put what number it is. So since the numbers aren't assigned yet, that's why there's a blank line on all of them.
Mike, where was the, did you say there was backup for number one somewhere?
For number one.
Question one.
Where are you seeing these numbers?
It's, uh-
No, we're, we're still looking on the town election ballot sheet, not the articles.
This is the, it's got, looks like this on the second page.
Oh, okay, okay.
Let me see, Mike?
Yep.
So much paper.
We're in a- Where are we seeing the numbers for the, where the articles are?
No, Sheila, I think Sheila has an articles paper, but we don't have it, I think is.
Yeah, you should have it in there.
It's right here. See, that's question one, question two, question three.
Okay. It's question, not article.
Correct.
Got me all mixed up here, I gotcha.
I'm sorry.
Right over here, Skip. Okay, I'm sorry, my bad.
Hope all of them matter.
Okay. Let, let's, let's move backwards. We had a decent conversation about DPW and the number and what makes up that DPW number.
So I'll make the motion to place article th, uh, question number three on this piece of paper right here from Anita Carlson.
For the ballot.
For the ballot, question three.
Question three.
With the, the adjusted numbers, right, with, can we amend that with the adjusted numbers of minus the-
Adjusted numbers of a hundred and forty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollars.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The senior center. So, our options are placing it here for a capital exclusion, um, thirty thousand dollars would be, I don't even wanna guess, I wanna say that's something like seven cents, six cents on the thousand valuation. It's a very small amount of money to put as a capital expenditure exclusion, I will say that. It's usually, uh, that's not usually what you would use this for, typically you would find this out of free cash, I will say that. It's a small amount of money to go to send all the way to a ballot and, and to also talk about on the town meetings. I, I will, that said, we can continue to have this discussion about the senior center, cause I think there's some differences of opinion.
Yeah, we're not adding the senior center, we're-
Well, no, but when we talk about the special town meeting and free cash, we could add that if we want to the free cash numbers and see what we think when we triage those together.
For the special meeting?
For the special, with our free cash leftover.
I should say too, that there were some items that were requested for free cash that I think really could be pushed off to the fall.
Okay.
So that seventy-seven and change really doesn't have to be seventy-seven and change.
Yeah, okay. So is it fair to say that, or, you know, I guess is everybody okay with not pushing a s, one-year capital expenditure exclusion tax increase for a thirty thousand dollar amount?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, question one, which we haven't talked about yet, was the big giant, here's how much money it's gonna take to make us all safe. I think the background that we need to know is that we've certainly had some high-level kind of commentary from the district, but we've gotten nothing from them officially. We sort of know they wanna do this, we know that if they were to present this to us, it's well over the district agreement, um, limit ceiling for capital expenditure. Mike Moriarty put a significant amount of work into trying to pull that all in, because we do have security issues across the town, across all buildings. I don't know if this is ready for prime time, honestly, that's just me, and I-
I will say too, just as a comment too, is that Mike did work with Darrell and the facilities director for Watch Use It Two, on making, and did a walkthrough of all the school buildings too.
It's five hundred and eighty-two thousand.
Yeah.
It's just-
Oh, I'm with you on that one, don't get me wrong.
And this is the one, you put it on there, well, this is for the ballot, right?
This is for the ballot.
I, I, I feel more comfortable having it on the ballot than at the, uh-
Oh, yeah, no, we could never do this in the world.
They come in and they stack it.
You know, this hasn't gone to anybody, this hasn't gone to FinCom, this hasn't gone to CIPC. The board's gonna take a huge hit if we place this, and that's fine, I mean, it's, it's our role to decide.
These are the only two we gotta place, these are the only ones we're gonna place, these here, we can amend and adjust as we go.
We can, but this ballot question, that's a, you know, that's a big deal.
Yeah, and if, if we don't show that we love our children and we wanna protect our people, we're gonna say, no, we don't wanna put this on the ballot? No way, let the townspeople say, we can't afford it, or, yeah, we got the money, let's do it, protect our kids. But, for us to say no, I'm not gonna say that.
Yeah, but there's not much detail in here where the, where it goes either.
Well-
I haven't seen it.
The language can be changed for sure, but, uh, it's-
We're at the end of the school year now, we can ask for, this is a major expense.
Yeah.
Uh, this is actually more than probably the chief's budget, yeah, right?
Yeah, I saw this.
Okay, cause there's the quotes in the back.
Five hundred and eighty-two, maybe?
And then the three thousand.
Half?
I mean, I'm with you, it's a lot. Um, I will, again, I'll say that the majority of it comes from cameras on the school buildings, uh, both in the long hallways, the doors, and the, um, front bell cameras. Again, they could get the grant, they could not, if they get the grant, it goes down.
Does it include, uh, like, uh, locking devices of, uh,
Of town-
Control for quick lockdowns and things like that, is it like that detailed?
Uh, in town buildings, in the schools, the schools are already looking at doing that on their own. So, because there's certain requirements that a school can and can't do, and-
Cameras, this is closed-circuit TV we're talking.
Yes, yep. Um, at the two, the three school buildings, which is where the bulk of them comes, and then the water towers, water treatment facility, annex, library, town hall.
Pool, council on aging.
Yep, yep.
Police and fire, DPW, library.
Yep.
So the option is put it on the ballot, the people decide, kick the can down the road, the special maybe?
I, I don't know if it's kicking the can down the road, I think this is a very large item and a very large number to essentially be coming before us for the first time.
Right.
And have, has not become, uh, come in front of anyone else.
With no way of how we pay it.
With no way to pay it.
I mean, other than a huge tax increase.
Right, right.
So.
Did that go to CPI?
No.
Nope.
It hasn't gone anywhere.
So no motion. Do we have a motion for the one?
I, I agree with Skip with the idea of, how can you not start thinking about doing this, we absolutely should be thinking about doing this? I just wonder if we would be doing, a lot of people led to service, if we throw this onto a ballot- I just wonder if we would be doing, a lot of people, a disservice, if we throw this onto a ballot, nobody knows a thing about it.
That's right.
Not only does it.
Oh, okay.
Not even, not only does it fail because of its cost, but it fails because we didn't do our homework and we didn't have enough information to provide to people so they knew what the heck they were voting on, on such a huge tax increase, cause I think it's absolutely merited.
Well, the homework should be done and given to us.
Well, everybody, the homework should be done and given to everybody.
And I mean, it sounds, it sounds like Mike did a lot of homework in trying to.
Yeah.
Work with the schools to do it, but he only has so much time also, so.
This is really not his job.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep, so we have to put forward the one question? No further motions.
No further motion?
Do you know if this, I just have, do you know if this is, if, is it all towns must pass?
No, that's just only Rutland buildings.
Just us.
No, no, so it's only Rutland buildings, so the others, district, the other schools either have it or they're not looking at it for the other schools, or we don't know.
We have no idea what the other schools.
Because we own the buildings, so it'd be ours.
But to Leah's point, no formal security proposal has come from the district for all five towns at all.
Because, because this started from a conversation Mike had with the schools.
Okay, this was us being proactive.
Okay.
Which is a good thing.
Because Mike heard they were replacing the front cameras, or applied for a grant to replace the front cameras anyway.
Yeah.
So then Mike was like, oh, let's just look at fixing everything, that way we're not going back to revisit fixing all the circuits and fixing up the connections and the closed circuits and stuff like that, so.
Which I can, I understand, but I also wonder if this district hasn't really put, we don't have a policy from the district about their district plan. Correct.
They've got surveillance policies already put in place, there's certain, that's why it has to be a closed circuit, there's certain restrictions. Most of that comes from the state and Desi.
Yeah, I feel like we would be doing a disservice to, I feel like it would put the bad taste in a lot of people's. And then it would just not end well, because if we did our homework, it might.
Yeah.
I mean, I think the only risk we run that we haven't talked about and putting it off is we may well have other big ticket items next year. Maybe it is a senior center, you know, I, that's, that's our only.
There'll always be some.
Skip, you feel like it should be placed?
I don't have any kids at school, I don't even have grandkids in the school system, so. I think it should, let the people make their mind up, but that's just me.
I'm really torn, I wanna do this, but it feels not ready.
I know.
And it feels like we're trying to slide it in completely at the eleventh hour.
Another one's six months from now.
Yep, so hold it off till next meeting, next town meeting.
Yeah, that's how you throw.
Yeah, this would be a year, not six months.
Yeah, well, it's a year down the road.
I mean, technically, we could get it onto the September, no, I can't, I can't do it.
I know, I wish we had it like even a month or two in advance, just to.
And I don't wanna minimize all of.
Wasn't done right.
All of Mike Moriarty's work, I know how much effort he put into this. And I think it's fantastic.
Shame on our school system that they haven't decided to do something like this before, to be honest with you.
Well, yeah.
With everything that's going on around this country.
Uh, we have to give credit, there's actually one principal here in town who has been just beating a drum about this and about the deficiencies.
But that's our people, that's not Watch Uzit regional, our schools are run under Watch Uzit regional guidelines and we don't have much to say about it.
I'm just saying, it was a, it was a particular principal that really has been, you know, really pushing this and, and is not seeing an enormous amount of movement on, from the district side, so I don't know. It's unfortunate that we have to sit here tonight, having only discussed it literally in the past twenty minutes.
Yeah.
And to try to place it on a ballot question, that, to me, that probably is the indicator that it's not ready.
Correct.
And, I mean, I'm so torn, but just, FinCom hasn't seen it, CIPC hasn't seen it, like.
No.
So how did this get before us?
It was submitted as a warrant request.
From an agency head?
Yep.
Yeah, and, and then without CIPCs, I mean.
There's nobody here to explain all this stuff either, I mean. The annual maintenance fees, they look ridiculously high.
Well.
But what, what do you get?
I think if we were looking at this document in June, we would be having a completely different conversation, right? We'd be asking questions and saying, alright, we have the following ten steps to take, let's move forward. We wouldn't be having a conversation of, okay, we ready to have everybody spend some money?
Right, where's the presentation, this is what's gonna be done?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're probably answering our own question.
Yeah, you just did.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so we have placed one question, a capital exclusion on the ballot for the sum of one forty-eight nine six six, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, does anybody have anything else? Nope, we're moving on, I'm going out of order, cause we have somebody here for the marsh lease, come on up, Jonathan. Where'd the lease go?
They're up here.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
No, I just meant Mike.
Uh, Mike Top.
Alright. So everyone has signed it?
Not yet.
Not yet, we're about to, we're gonna, hold on, we're gonna make a motion with three changes, Mike, do you wanna read them?
Sure. The motion, the amendments that were voted to approve were section one C.
You wanna give me a copy so we can read it?
Yeah, yeah, you can go there. Uh, and then this was going to be presented to Rutland Baseball for their consideration. Uh, was one C notwithstanding the foregoing, the town reserves the right and tenant agrees, oh, sorry Jonathan, are you, I should have waited.
Yep, one C, yep.
To give priority to the town, to use the premise, premises, including any improvements for a reasonable purpose with adequate notice for town-related uses. So it changes that not to exceed three days per lease year to for reasonable uses with adequate notice.
No. We've gone around and around, I mean, this has been forty months. Now, this going around and around, and I don't see forty months as a reasonable time to do a lease. So I fear that the town doesn't know the term reasonable, and we had this conversation, you, Sheila and I.
We did, and we actually used the word reasonable, cause you had come in with one and we said we really didn't wanna set a, set a limit and we were hoping that reasonable was going to be acceptable to all parties.
We said two, so we came in with two, cause, cause the original lease was a blank slop spot that said blank number of days. And so we came in with two, you originally came back and said no, we talked about the reasonable and ultimately we came to three in that, on that day. Before I left that room, we came to three and we walked away from reasonable and so to now be blindsided by that today is a problem for us.
But that wasn't the recollection of our discussion that the number three was out there? The discussion that we had.
I remembered reasonable.
Was that it was reasonable, so three was a blindside.
I don't have my notes, John, I, I remember reasonable, us settling on reasonable.
Ultimately said, I'd give you a third day, we'd give you a third day of the league and you said, okay, we, I'm, Sheila, I swear, that's what happened and so.
Okay.
Okay, so what are the other two, I mean, ultimately, I I don't think this is gonna be another conversation we're gonna have to have then, but I don't see this being signed by us tonight.
Uh, the other two was under F, right on this, they're actually all on that same page. So F, uh, just added DPW director after the third line from the bottom, Rutland Fire Chief, Rutland Police Chief and Director of Public Works.
Okay, so that, so that is an emergency protocol, so can, can somebody explain what the emergency protocol would be for DPW needing to get into those buildings?
Water break.
No, well, it's cost us money, it wasn't a water break, I mean, it wasn't a main break, but, okay.
Utilities, emergency utility.
I, I find, I, Joe, I trust you.
And then G was the other, uh, amendment that the board, um, just adding to the end. Herbicides on the premises after receiving, uh, written approval by the Director of Public Works.
So even for organic? I mean, the, the whole, that second line is all about organic and biodegradable pesticides and, and herbicides, so.
Well, it, it references fertilizer in a specific sentence and Joe, what Joe brought up, we were talking, you know, there was discussion of stormwater and Joe can probably explain it better than me, um, just the idea that relevant, um, relative to the issue we had last season with this, it would probably be best for all parties involved for you to come, you have a discussion with him, here's what we're planning to do, and that would be the end of it.
So that we're in compliance with recent stormwater legislation, right? Recent, within the last year of this.
So we'd need approval for fertilizer as well?
Yeah, and it's not so much the fertilizer, that, or the, it's more the frequency with which you're fertilizing. And believe it or not, we're, we, um, we answered to Massachusetts DEP and the United States Environmental Protection Agency for our stormwater management program. Um, Rutland's just getting off the ground with it, but a lot of those documents focus on loadings. And fertilizers are a nutrient and can be considered loading for certain receiving waters, that's where it comes from. It's not someone trying to have too much control over the baseball field as much as to make sure we're compliant with state and federal regulators, that's all.
Okay, so, so I, then I just need to ask the question, is that gonna be changed across the board for everything in town? Because we know that there's fertilizer used on all those hang fields that are used and so is this a universal, town is gonna make this decision about everything, or is this gonna be a?
My memory, according to the way state and federal regulation is currently written, that's public, we own the land. Therefore, we're responsible, and that's usually that what the state and the Fed uses as a hook. So we wouldn't necessarily be overseeing all, all fields for fertilizer treatment, but if it's technically public property, yeah, we have.
No, that's what I'm saying, there, there are a number of fields in town that are hated by farmers in town that are, that were currently, they're using fertilizers on it, they're using pesticides on it. And so the question is, is that, is this rule going to apply to every town parcel equally? Or is this a Marshfield specific question?
Relevant to your comment about this taking forty months, and you and I have had conversations about how many things have come up just because it's a new day and a new lease and legal ba, you know, legal takes a long time. We do not currently have any active leases for hayfields that we know of or can find. And my guess is, we're gonna start having the exact same conversations and the exact same questions come up and for all I know, the next one will take eighty months. Because you're right, this has taken an enormous amount of time, we are getting caught up in probably what's gonna end up looking like minutia in retrospect. Um, I think, I'm not sure why we're hung up on that last one, I, Mike and I were both in the room that day. I, I honestly remember reasonable, I'm not trying to cheat you or, or trick you, I remember reasonable. Um, and so when we saw that number, it, it's just, those were the three changes. Uh, we're hoping, we'd like to see you have opening day with a signed lease, honestly, it's why, it's why we're all here.
I agree, I just, I can't, I just can't go with the, with the word reasonable, I mean, we need a, we need a definitive number.
Okay. I, I, okay, I guess we're done here then, we won't sign it if, um, I mean, I think the expectation was it would be executed by both parties tonight, right?
No, and I'd love to do it, I just, I mean, when I walk into the room and it's different than the lease that was sent to me on Saturday with changes by legal counsel and even changes that we talked about today via email and the phone and tend to be blindsided at eight thirty at night when the lease is gonna get signed, is a little disingenuous and so it's a little frustrating to walk in here tonight thinking we had a lease, we had an agreement, it got read by multiple people. And then tonight to be told, we're gonna change it, I just. I, I don't know, I don't know where we go from here, but.
So, I mean, just so we can clarify, for people who, who don't have the, uh, I guess the luxury of looking what we're, we're discussing here, it's permissible use by the landlord, this is what the one issue, the hangup for the issue is, permissible use of the landlord. The town is, is stating that the town reserves the right uh, for a reasonable amount of times to use the premises mutually, I think mutually agreed, is that wording in there?
Yep.
Uh, for specific town-related events included by, limited to, you know, the softball game. The police versus fire softball game, and then Rutland Little Leagues based on, on your representation is that it shouldn't exceed three days. So that's what the whole hangup, so everybody's clear, that's, that's what the, the line in the sand is, the stalemate is. So, uh, we did meet, we did discuss it and as the chair said the, the board discussed it and I don't know if we voted or made a motion, we did, we made a motion on it, so, uh, I guess that's behind us already. We already made a motion that reasonable is our line, uh, on there, so, but I would welcome any return by Rutland Little League if you were to take this back to your, your board.
So I think it's important for the board to understand, in forty-six years, the town has used it once, one time. Police chief asked to play the kids a Deveraux, at one time. Three is reasonable, three times a year, we're going from one in forty-six years to three times in a year, every year.
Can I ask you if past practice is considered reasonable? And not know, and, and by the way, that past practice in all the time that Marshfield has been in existence, we actually don't know that far back cause all of us are new to it, there may have been other nonprofits coming in and out, we have no idea, but in the more recent history, we had one. We may well have other town departments that say, geez, we'd like to do something similar as well. And all of a sudden it turned into one year, four. And somehow that no longer is okay, because we didn't use the word reasonable and I, I do understand the hangup which seems to really hinge on a lack of trust, that there's this, you know, to your point, we've only used it once. I don't see any situation where the town is gonna come and say, hey, we need it every Sunday.
But, but the other, but the flip side of this is that it also says in that section, at no cost to the town, we're gonna incur inspe, uh, expenses in there. Just to run the lights costs us money, and so you start talking reasonable, we're talking five, six times, you run those lights at night, that's not cheap. We have to replace every bulb this year, you know how much that's gonna cost us? Forty-seven hundred dollars just to replace the light bulbs.
But you lease it for a dollar.
Right, but all those improvements are ours, and so that's the thing, we have sunk over probably half a million dollars into that space over the last forty-six years. We've sunk, just in my time on the Rutland Little League Board, we have sunk over a hundred thousand dollars into town property that we have no control over. Nobody fixes up those fields, no offense to DPW, they mow the grass, but those fields are maintained by Little League. And so we do an awful lot in this town that no other nonprofit in town does. And so I, I'm, it's a little frustrating that we're, we're sitting here and it's making it look like we're, we're the bad guys on this. I, we get nothing out of it, like, we get space for the kids to play, but middle school baseball, middle school softball, the schools aren't funding anything on those fields. We're maintaining those fields, the pitcher's mounds, the rub, the, the home plate, the backstops, those are all maintained by Little League. And so I, I get it, but we sink a lot of money in and it's really frustrating that this is where we're getting hung up. I, I personally like to note, was it unanimous vote to add, to change the language there?
I believe it was.
Well, it was executive session.
Well, leaked out, yeah, I, I, we, we get it, if you wanna hear it.
I.
It was an executive session.
Yeah.
I wouldn't want anybody on baseball to think that the town doesn't appreciate the condition that Marshfield is in and the fact that the town, particularly in the past ten to fifteen years, could never have gotten Marsh in the state that it is in today. Not even close, we get that. All that said, what you just indicated, all the money that gets poured in, it's for a very small percentage of our taxpayers. And you're using taxpayer-funded land, and so I guess when we're stuck in the word reasonable, I, I guess everybody's still feeling like they're being reasonable.
The town still owns it.
Because I agree with you, I doubt that you will get more than three calls for anybody to use that field, I agree. But I don't know for sure, and I don't think we're probably putting ourselves in the right position in terms of being responsible for town-owned assets if, if we allow that to happen.
Then, then I'll go back, you can use it reasonable amount of time, you can use the field and the lights. But not the announcer's booth and not the, the, and the bathrooms, you can have the bathrooms, but you can't use the rest of the improvements. I mean, that's, that's ultimately a concession, I mean, you, we're incurring expenses to allow you guys to use it, and I get it, it's your property. But ultimately, if we pulled out of that property, it goes back to being a dump, it is literally the town, it was the town dump. And so I'm not trying to play hardball, it's just, we're, the, what you're seeing here is frustration that it has taken forty months, two town administrators, eight different selectmen, two different, um.
Three administrators.
Three, three, and, and so, and, and two legal coun, town legal councils, and, and so I, I mean, I don't know what the hangup is in getting, getting, allowing us to put a number there. I mean, ultimately, it was your lease that you provided me originally that had a blank for the number of times per year, your le, you provided it to me.
Well.
And so we filled in a blank and now this is where we're getting hung up.
And in retrospect? And in retrospect, maybe if you had filled in twenty, nobody would be here, but that would have sounded crazy, probably to you, probably even to us.
There's not twenty days a year that, without snow on the ground, that that field's available?
But that's exact, you know, again, it, and that's why I think it's unfortunate that the, it's not even the semantics of a word, it's almost like a trust issue for something that may never come to pass.
It's a big trust issue, unfortunately, that's.
You're right, it's unfortunate, because it's our property that we own, we have to, we have to watch out for the town's interests.
Didn't I see something in there about, uh, expenses that the town would, if the town incurred any expenses?
Only if we pay somebody, but there's, there's all sorts of use of the, the snack shack and, and utilities that you're not on the hook for, there's, there's costs associated that we would not be allowed to charge you, and we know that, and so, but it's just fr, I mean, it's, like I said.
Don't you see that as an offset to a lease payment you would pay for any other private landowner? I, maybe you don't, you don't have to answer that, you can take the fifth, I, I just, I'm, you know, how long were you on the field that time? If we use you as an example, I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
Uh, two hours?
Couple hours, and it was during the day, right? We didn't, at that point?
No, it was nice, it was nice.
Oh, was it night with the light? Okay, couple hours?
I agree with what, you put me on the spot, so I gotta agree with what you said, first time in all those years.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't see it happening too many more times.
No.
I don't either.
I don't either.
Nick, I don't either, I, I don't see us having this conversation about it over even fifteen or ten days. I, I think there's just this hangup of, why a number? If we all know it's going to happen very infrequently, then why the number?
Because for some reason, Marshfield has become this hot button issue in town.
It's not, I think everybody just wants it to be done. Everybody voted to sign the lease, everybody wants this to move forward, two ten-year extensions.
Name a number that would be reasonable for you guys.
What do you mean by hot issue in town?
Ah.
It's a long story.
Okay.
But.
I haven't seen it as a hot issue, other than the fact that it's.
It's a little league field.
The best little league field you can find. Uh, other than that, I don't, I've heard nothing about being any kind of an issue.
I think we're so close on that one issue that.
So I.
We, you, if you want to circle back with us, I, I would, I would give them the four anytime.
I, I mean, he may be in a position where he can't make that decision for his board, I get that.
So what would a number be for the board to say, to him saying, five, three, he offered three, and everybody in the room says they use it once in umpteen years, so you put a number five on it, or four, or, I mean, he's got to have something to go back with his people with.
I mean, it's just every time we make, we, we come to the table, we make concessions, the league make concessions, we think that the, the town is also making concessions on the lease, only to have the town back out on it, and I understand, it's one person negotiating for the, a board of five, but every time, it's, our things get appro, the things that we concede on get approved, the things that the town concedes on get reversed, and we're right back in the same boat again, this is the second time this has happened. And so, it's, it's kind of frustrating that we think we have something negotiated, and I get it, it's a, it's a five-person board, one person, so I don't know how we move forward with this, but.
Just to be fair, one of the things you asked for eleventh hour was, can we revisit the extension, one ten-year extension? That has been added, it's been reviewed, we're here, we're here to sign.
And I'm appreciative of that, that's, that's great, I mean, it's just, we're just trying to extend the fact that, I mean, we know we've owned that, that property for twenty-three years without a lease, or twenty-six years, whatever that has been.
And with this signature, you have the opportunity to get thirty more, for a dollar a year. I, I don't know, I thought, I thought it was reasonable, I like that word, clearly, I think there's a reason I like the word, the fact that Nick needed that field, wanted to use that field last year, and that it was new, it was a good thing, two years, excuse, sorry, two years ago was a good thing for the town, and it was new, we'd like to see more of that, not necessarily at Marshfield, but just more of that. So to say, well, it's never happened before, it might never happen again, I don't know that that, I think maybe that's where we're getting hung up. The town is bigger than it was when Marshfield was conceived of, and it's, and Marshfield is a different thing, um, and we get that too. I guess, yeah, we're still stuck on this idea that, the, of a trust issue with R L L B, that they don't think the town will be reasonable, and therefore the word is frightening.
I think the word reasonable infers a conversation's going to have to take place between the requestor and our, our L B. It's just, there's nothing, uh, I don't know, nothing evil behind our intention there.
All right, so I, when you, you brought up good faith, and you know, we're going to go around in this in circles all night, um, I, honest to God, John, and I kind of keep looking at you, I'm not sure how you remember it, I remember still reasonable, I don't remember three, I honestly don't. If I'm remembering it wrong, sitting in that room, I apologize, I still don't.
I, I walked out of that room thinking, we finally have an answer.
I did too.
And so that's why, like, that's why three was, like, I, I'm confident that that's what we discussed, and so.
Okay.
So I don't know how we go around this.
So we got a little, so it's, yeah, so here we are, we remember one thing, you remember another, we're ready to sign tonight with those three changes that you heard from, it sounds to me like that one is just not going to work, so I guess at that point, we'll just.
We have a couple other issues to discuss, right?
With what?
On our agenda, if you, if you want to make phone calls, talk to these peers, uh, welcome him back before closing business, I mean.
Yeah, I don't think, I, I'm not, that's not going to happen tonight, and so.
Then.
So.
Okay, so there, our execution tonight's not going to get you anywhere, okay.
No.
So can I ask, may I ask, do you need a number?
I, I'd like to hear the select word, give me a number, on what they believe is, what you believe is reasonable, but it doesn't appear that you're ready to do that, so, I don't.
I, I mean, we can't, we're not, we haven't talked about it, right, so.
I mean, the reality is the town, the town departments, if it, never use any other field in town, that's the reality, and so, so we're making this an issue about Marshfield for some reason, it's not like you ever play at Central Tree, and that the police ever play the fire department at Central Tree, and now you want to step it up and you want the lights in the announcer's booth, that doesn't happen, that these town, these town games that you're talking about are going to happen, they never happen, and so reasonable just doesn't, I don't know, I'm not, you guys have business.
All right, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, who's here for things, and we're going to do those things, what are you here for, Nick?
I was sticking around for the street sign.
Street sign, let's do street sign. So we're under new business.
Yep. We've got a couple, just two. Central Tree, Nick, or Maple?
Maple.
Which one are we talking about first?
Uh, we could Central Tree first.
I'd also like to add, if I could, um, that I also spoke to a constituent on, on Central Tree that was concerned about the, the speed, the increase of speed since people are using it for thoroughway to, to get to one-twenty-two A, so, in addition to this petition we have here, so. And a request for some, maybe some policeman's ability now and then.
We've been, we've been.
Top of the hill. Oh, okay.
In conjunction, we started getting complaints.
You got some calls, okay.
In conjunction with the sign requests, we started putting some people out there.
Okay, good, thanks.
They've grabbed a few.
Oh, yeah? All locals too, right?
Yeah, the local are holding, a lot of people cut through that way, uh, coming from Holden's side.
All right, well, thank you for that.
So I'm seeing recommendation for a sign to indicate the current speed limit, and that's going where?
I would recommend one at one-twenty-two A and one at the Holden Town Line, at Cannon Road, so one on, one on each end.
Are they speed limit signs, or those yellow advisory?
Speed limit signs, so under.
Full-blown?
Under chapter ninety-seventeen, the speed limit on that street is already thirty miles per hour, it's just not posted, we would just be posting it. So there would be no change to the current speed limit, it's just.
So you wouldn't need a traffic study?
You don't need a study.
No.
So you're just posting a sign of existing speed limit?
Of what it is.
Right.
But there's, I've seen two options, you have the big white post speed limit thirty, or you could be an advisory that this is thickly settled.
Yeah, I, I differ that with Joe, I would, I would go with the regular thirty mile per hour sign, unless, uh.
Which is actually kind of a lot for Central Tree too, but.
Yeah, and to make it any lower, we wouldn't need a traffic study, right? Thirty is reasonable.
Well, which sign, which sign is, is a better indicator to the, the motoring public to take it easy through it? Something that says thickly settles?
Big one.
Thirty?
Thirty.
Or the big old thirty, this is the number.
Yep.
Because frankly, it's an enforcement issue, I mean, we looked at it originally, we thought they wanted to change the speed limit, but if it's just a tool to do enforcement, I think you're better off with the regular sign.
The gold sign, all right. And, and the petitioner asked for one at each end here, two.
Do we have money for the two signs? Or do we have the two signs?
Do, we don't, we, we were actually assembling a sign, a list of signs to get repaired after the winter, um, we do have some signed, but we don't have any stop, it's like that.
All right.
I get a motion?
I think a motion that we approve the street sign request, uh, for Central Tree Road, thirty mi, mile per hour, speed limit signs, two of them, one at each end of Central Tree Road.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone?
The, um, the second sign request was, came from Mr. Elbeck, he sits on the board, I guess, um, he's asking to have a, a sign, Maple Ave, at Maple Brook Drive, that says, um, not a thruway, I guess a lot of residents there have seen a lot of people come in there and turn around and it.
Where's Maple Brook?
I guess it's a private street off of Maple.
Yeah, how far?
It's about a quarter mile or less on the left as you go in south part of the.
And they wanted to pay for the sign, I guess he sits on the board there.
It's over fifty.
Okay, so it's.
It's over fifty-five.
Trailers? Yeah, oh, oh, okay.
No, it's by the post office.
Yes.
Before or after, I can't remember.
It's after the post office on the left, it's, uh.
After Phillips Ave, we're right across from Phillips Ave.
Okay, people.
But I guess the residents have complained about, about people coming in there.
I see that, yep.
Why would anyone pull in there?
Because they think it's an M.
Why would anyone pull in there?
They, yeah, like Jeff said, they probably think it's a cutthroat.
Is there, is there a sign down at Village Way?
I don't believe so.
Because it's similar, that's similar also, right, that it's like a cul-de-sac back to the neighborhood?
Village Way loops through though.
Maple Brook, I haven't.
No, Maple Brook, uh, branches off into like a Y and it dead ends on both sides, or like a cul-de-sac, I mean, so.
People turn around in private way.
Well, it's a dead end, right?
Yeah, it's a dead end, maybe that's what ought to have a sign saying dead end.
Dead end or not a thruway, I think, totally unreasonable.
It didn't seem unreasonable, his request didn't seem unreasonable, and they offered to pay for the sign, I guess, then, a lot of the residents have complained it's a safety issue.
Pay or install?
Install.
Well, if it's a private way, can we regulate where he puts up the signs?
We, we can, because the sign would be on Maple Ave and it's within our right of way.
Oh, okay, that makes sense.
So they're actually just asking for permission to install a sign?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and it's approved by the, the police chief and the fire chief.
Motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the sign request for the owner to put up a not-a-thru-way sign at the intersection of Maple Ave and Maple Brook Drive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in word.
Thank you, chief.
Can I?
Appreciate it.
Is that your?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Don't forget the, or did he take it back? Kidding.
Okay, um, I'm gonna just, I'm gonna flip around a little bit, and then I guess my question to the board is, it is now nine o'clock, we need to do a warrant review, um, but are we at the point where this needs to happen on, say, Thursday before FinCom, or do we like push through? At which point, I'm going to save it for the end, and just get through all the other business.
Um.
It's going to take some time.
I wouldn't mind doing it before FinCom, um, gets us all to FinCom.
I don't have a problem with that.
It's Thursday, right? I mean, I think fresh eyes need to be.
You all right with posting for six? Or give us an hour?
Yeah, I think it, we got to do this justice here.
I should be able to. Okay, we have two letters, I'm going to move on to appointment of new senior center committee members, we have two letters.
For two spots.
What's that?
For two open spots.
For two open spots, um, I was, I was also contacted by somebody, and I'm wondering, hmm, did we give a deadline on this?
No.
Okay, why don't we hold these appointments?
All right.
The senior center committee doesn't have a first meeting set, right?
No.
Okay. Maybe that's something we need to talk about, along with placing a warrant article, anyway. All right, so we're going to hold that for next meeting, appointment of the senior center committee, uh, the Seoul Systems lease.
This is a lease that was prepared by our legal counsel, sent over to Seoul Systems, and they agreed to it, to, uh, for the lease of the land on, is this the Central Tree Road? It's the non Heights property lease, that they're coming to put a.
So it's either Central Tree or Wheeler Road, I don't know what.
Wheeler Road, Wheeler Road.
Is it on Wheeler Road?
It's got the parcel number, yes.
Okay.
Well, the, no, the description says Central Tree Road, parcel fifty-nine A twelve, and Wheeler Road, parcel fifty-nine A one.
Gives the parcel, but.
Yeah, I know that, but.
They, they had been talking about potentially, I think, going on, in through Central, Central Tree, but I'm not one hundred percent sure if that's finalized, the plans that we had seen at one point.
This will, would allow them to make that decision, if you ask me?
Yeah.
I feel like they can't make that until then, and then Joe has been in contact with them to about, um, his concerns.
Do I speak now, or hold my peace? You can clap it for me today, because, um, we have a solar committee meeting tomorrow, which this will be brought up, and, um, I have taken a look at, some of the solar was going to be put into the fields, it showed some of it in the fields, no, they cannot, so.
It cannot go in the field?
Mm-mm.
Why?
It's a hayfield.
It's a hayfield.
Hmm.
It's a prime agricultural field, so, no, it can go in the woods, or go up on top of the hill like originally, took them and showed them originally up there.
How much of it is in the hayfield?
I don't know, well, what?
Forty percent maybe.
Yeah.
Forty percent?
Yeah, it's that, yeah, yeah.
So, a good portion of it.
Yeah.
Well, anyways, like I say, that's our discussion tomorrow, the Seoul meeting.
They're moving, they sent plans with boards today, and they started the Wetland Study already, they're flying through that.
So, just so I understand, we're looking at a lease right in front of us to execute?
That's correct, that, that's.
Where was this missed?
The only map I have seen so far, I can't remember where the heck it was, but I thought it might...
Right here. It was not to scale, nor north and south or whatever on it.
Yeah, and I, I was thinking, I also saw it at the water treatment plant. I stopped in there one day and he, he was showing me. I, I mowed the, I mowed around the edge of the field one time and tried to help them out when they had a tractor breakdown some time ago. And when I was told that, you know, solar fields was going to go up in that area, and I says, what? No, I says, originally we took them up above, we wanted them to put it up on top, on Wheeler Road.
They poured a piece in the pond.
And now they're down there from that, and they also have it stuck in the back end of the other piece that's more towards Holden, in that field too. So, and they, they had some in, in both fields. And I said, wait a minute. And so I went and I asked a question and I got a, a copy of the map from, uh, you know, Boynton Street Holden, USGA, and, uh, and sure enough, it's prime agricultural land, so no, they're not going to touch it.
So page twelve of the lease states that forty-five days before commencing installation, the tenant gives the landlord, for the landlord's approval, copies of design plans, drawings, specifications, and detailed schedules for such work.
I haven't seen a thing.
Well, this isn't signed yet though.
Right.
Like I say, we have a solar committee meeting tomorrow, and it's the first time we're going to be talking about this. You might have, you might have had another solar meeting while I was in either Florida or when I was out with my knee.
Well.
But this is coming up now.
Well, somehow it's got to get resolved.
Yes.
What was the understanding for tonight as far as this document?
Uh, Soul Systems was requesting execution so that they could send us the plans for later approval, but just that way they have a right to use the land, um, because they're looking to do their borrowings and studies on the land, and they don't want to do that until the lease is signed.
Well, they did the borrowings.
No, they have no.
Oh.
They just said draw.
No, that's their proposal.
They just marked them all?
Yeah.
I think we're going to start flying drones?
Yeah, the drones every week.
They got the drones up. This picture here doesn't do us any good, it's...
I know.
Blacked out, I mean, so.
I mean, you know, we've had Beth Greenblatt involved in this, she generally doesn't miss a trick. I'm just trying to figure out what happened, why you're here tonight saying this.
Because I haven't been at any of the other meetings, so.
So you don't know if they're okay with it? The solar committee?
If they've already checked it off, they probably are okay, but they don't know about, uh, you know, that it's prime agricultural land.
Designated as such.
Yeah. I, I have the copies of it, should I go out and get it, you know, get it out of my car?
No, I mean, I don't, no, it's going to change.
I got the copies that I had, had made for me, uh, for the solar committee for tomorrow, so.
Are they going to be at the meeting tomorrow night?
This is tomorrow at ten o'clock in the Board of the Systems office.
Are they going to be there?
Tomorrow night?
Soul Systems.
Soul Systems?
No.
Your meeting?
No.
So I'm just looking at the origi- one of the original emails, it's from Jul- last July, and it says, "The adjustment in a layout reflects a portion of the array on the cleared land in the Central Tree Road parcel, parcel being moved away from the road and increasing the area of tree clearing from fourteen to sixteen acres. Change has a slight impact on pricing due to the total acreage being reduced from twenty-six to twenty-five. Wheeler Road revised." So out of twenty-five acres, sixteen of which are being cleared for trees? You're saying the rest is, is on USDA?
Must be on the fields, no. I mean...
Okay.
I, I'd like to see their drawing, what they're proposing.
You can't get a drawing till you sign it, Dick.
And you can't sign it until you get the drawings the heck out of the field.
Well, I mean, we got this, we, we, we have a, we have a Google Maps overlay here that shows us. And is this what he's talking about?
Up from the treatment plant was part of it, and then over in the other field.
Can you zoom in on that?
And, and if you're standing at the substation on Central Tree, the field on the right, they had it in the, in the back side, they can't put it into, uh, the right hand, ha- half of the right-hand corner of the field drops off about twelve feet. So they're not going to be able to move it back into the woods there.
So if we're just looking like from, I apologize, if we're just looking from Mashka Pog over, they've allowed for a four-hundred-foot buffer from the entire perimeter of Mashka Pog, and then, and then the panels just start and they go all the way down. Across the, I mean, we're pretty much the entire property, right? End to end, halfway down to the road.
So my consent updated, I think it's pretty much the same.
Yeah.
Updated on March fifteenth.
It's taking away half of the...
The Wheeler Road and the...
Half of it, yeah.
And the Heights, March fifteenth was one that...
Oh, it's the same one, yeah.
All right.
So I just searched my email for Soul Systems.
Yeah, that's what I did too, um, okay. I, I guess what you're saying to us isn't new from any of the maps from, from quite some time ago. But what we're essentially hearing tonight is that every town agency and our consultant didn't know about land restrictions?
Yeah, I'm just bringing this up, yes, that is correct.
Okay. All right, well, then I guess we're moving on.
Yeah, somebody's going to notify them.
Tomorrow. They'll be notified tomorrow.
Yes.
Can I say something else about Soul Systems?
Sure.
Because RDIC got a lease agreement today as well, I think, for the RDIC property.
Okay.
But we also had a visitor from our biggest of butter, largest of butter, who asked when, when there was going to be a public hearing on it because the abutters didn't get notified of a public hearing, and would they need to be?
In the legal town, I'm not sure if they, because the public hearing's not hosted by the town, that's hosted by the developer themselves. Um, so they probably won't do that until the lease is signed because they have no use to hold a public hearing if they're not going to get the lease anyway. Otherwise, we could have twelve different, that's just the way that the legal side of stuff works there, so that's probably why that hasn't happened.
I remember when Soul System was in, them saying that they planned on having public hearings.
Once the lease was signed?
Yeah.
But isn't that kind of a, isn't that too late if the lease is signed?
The public hearing is for input on what the project looks like, not whether or not the project is happening. So maybe that was...
Got it.
I don't know if that was...
Well, I don't know, I, I just, I, I think the concern was that as an abutter, a- and where it was going to affect their sightline specifically, why they weren't notified. They were asking the question why they weren't notified about it as an abutter.
Right, I mean, I think you could ask the same question every time. Somebody who owns a house has a property next to them purchased by a developer, and the developer clears land for houses. They do not notify abutters because they're working on their own land. So in this case, the town had full authority, RDSC, full authority to give permission to have this project move forward. But the method by which it moves forward, generally, they want public comment because they don't want people to hate them.
But see, normally also, uh, the planning board has, has to write a special permit, but with it being town property, there's no special permit issued on this, so therefore there was no public hearing because of that.
There has to be a special permit for wa- for the reservoir problem.
Pardon?
There has to be a special permit issued for the watershed problem.
On the...
Right.
Up on that?
Yes.
And Wheeler Road?
Yes.
But, uh, not RDICs.
No.
Okay, so, so legally, we're okay even though...
Correct.
Well, relative to that particular question.
Yes, 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 okay. Thank you.
All right, this is turning into a topic of night. Started out so good with all those contracts getting signed. Okay, Glenwood Property Soccer Field RFP.
This was drafted by, uh, myself and Attorney Everett at KP Law. It's pretty much KP boiler print on RFPs, and the, um, it was modeled after the recent Marshfield RFP that went out, um, but changed to fit for recreation use, um, for the, um, property at Glenwood.
So you're continuing on that, you're arguing about the, uh, what the ag committee had found that, uh, you had to get a, a legislator to sign off on it, on that piece of property?
A legislator?
Legislation, Boston has to sign off on it.
Legal's currently looking at that, this is kind of a concurrent, because this is our release, we pull it, we pull it. Um, but should we get the okay from legal? This would allow us to continue the process, and if something happens, we just pull the ad.
So they're looking for a motion of...
A motion to approve to post.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve to post, uh, the lease. Lease recomp, uh, yeah, lease for Glenwood.
Request for proposal.
Request for proposal for Glenwood Field Lease.
I'll second it for discussion if there's any more.
So just to be clear, relative to Dick's question, um, and I know when AdCon was here at our last meeting, they asked, uh, specifically about, about legal review, um, and also town department review, which of course, and I think you've been involved with a lot of that, um, and we reiterated that, that we had had pretty much every office involved, assessors, uh, town treasurer, collector, um, planning board, uh, and then the Board of Selectmen obviously ensured that before we placed the article on the town meeting warrant, that it was legally reviewed. The Article ninety-seven that you bring up had been discussed in the, as well. Um, it's certainly our understanding at this point, I know Mike said legal's looking at it yet again, but it was our understanding that that pertained to state-owned property. Um, it's actually, well, yeah, so we'll, we'll get the legal opinion on the, um, on Article ninety-seven. Is there any more discussion?
We're going to make sure we do it right.
So don't wait.
Is there any more discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, yeah, I made the motion.
Yes, you did, unanimous. DCR Bill?
Uh, again, uh, we just received correspondence, and correspondence received by the board has to go on the agenda. Uh, you'll see the letter that we've talked about in the past from DCR asking us for a, let, to let them know within seven days of when we received it, um, when we will be submitting payment for the second quarter sewer bill for transportation charges. Um, so I answered their question, and I said, you asked us to provide you a date as to when the town will pay it, and I said it'll be paid on or before June thirtieth, which is the end of the fiscal year, which is when we'd have to pay before the state pulls it out of the cherry shoots anyway, uh, which is what they threatened to do. So they got their answer, and what's with it is the, uh, a copy of the certified receipt that we received at the office today saying that they've acknowledged receipt.
All right.
Nothing before the board on that?
No, just notification for correspondence purposes.
All right, I skipped around a lot, so are we all still in agreement that we'll do the warrant review, um, at a special Thursday meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
All right, then we did the liquor license, Constellation, all of Mike's stuff, CIPC, the cab ballot questions are done, uh, Senior Center, we will hold to the next meeting. Street sign requests were approved, Soul Systems held, Marshfield leased, no action. Glenwood Fields signed for the RFP and the bill. All right, could I get a motion to go into executive session for reason number one?
Did we do the appointment of the, the...
We're holding that till next meeting.
We're going to hold that till next meeting.
This one here?
Yeah, well, we had two people, but I could, I thought there was a...
Because you think there might be a third?
I thought there was a third, yeah.
Okay, and then, um, we all know about tomorrow's meeting? The, tomorrow's invite with the planning board? So it's a planning board meeting about the managed growth?
Mm-hmm.
Um, shoring up the final product, I guess, from the Planning Board Subcommittee on the Bylaw. Um, so we were invited, if we do have a quorum, it's posted.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, that's it. Not going to be obviously as extensive as the joint meeting, but we are invited, um, to partake, so. I'll be there.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
I think I told you I'd be late, but I will be in the building.
What time does it start, Dick?
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty.
Okay.
See you then, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else to come before the board?
You too.
We'll go to executive session?
Yep.
I'll move we go into executive session for reason number one. Discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual, or discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints or charges against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual, only to return to open session.
For adjournment.
For adjournment.
Thank you.
Second, Walker aye.
Walker aye.
Waitman aye.
Stillings aye.
Deby, and we are in executive session.